Welcome to the regular Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency meeting of March, I'm sorry, April 23rd. Members of the public wishing to address the council should fill out a speaker card. They're located in the lobby and at the desk. Any comments should be limited to three minutes unless the mayor pro tem grants additional While the meeting is in session, members of the council, staff, and the members of the audience are expected to maintain order and decorum. And I think you know the rest of that.[53.46][53.46](Laughter). Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clapp is not here at the moment. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Strobel?
Present.
And Mayor Blatz is excused absent this evening.
I'll ask Councilwoman Smith to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Follow me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation from the Ventura County Civic Alliance, 2013 State of the Region Report.
This is by far the coziest council chambers I've ever been in. It's very, very nice.
Nice to see you.
We're going to give you sort of the USA Today version of the State of the Region Report. My name is Tom Tarantino and along with Ron Batorf from the Ventura County Civic Alliance, we're here to present the highlights from my just-released 2013 State of the Region Report that you have in front of you. The Civic Alliance, for those of you who don't know, is an initiative of the Ventura County Community Foundation and is a coalition of civic leaders with a shared commitment to bringing the economic, environmental, and social equity interests, what we call the three Es, of our region together to address priority community issues. We have three working groups, which are described on page four of your report. The State of the Region Report is a valuable resource for our community that looks at over 65 indicators across 12 domains and was independently researched by Dr. Jamshid Demouy, I had to practice that name, and his team at California Lutheran University. We contracted with freelance journalist Tony Biasadi to write the report. Beginning on page 98, the report lists the source of every data indicator in the report, so you can drill down in any area that is of interest to you. We have additional copies here, but the report is also available free online at www.civicalliance.org. Next slide. There you go. We're grateful certainly to our many sponsors, which are all listed on the inside-back cover. This includes the Ventura County Community Foundation, the Workforce Investment Board, and the Ventura County Community College District. Other sponsors, as you can see, include California Lutheran University, Cal State Channel Islands, Limoneira, Harrison Industries, Community Memorial Hospital, the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, thank you, and the Gene Haas Foundation. Moving right along. We're going to move kind of quickly through this because we've got a lot of information to cover and I don't want to put everybody to sleep. So, okay, key statistics. On pages six and seven, we've introduced a new section in the report, key statistics. A lot of this comes from the U.S. Census. You'll find the population of the county in all 10 cities, along with the poverty rate, the per capita income, the median household and family incomes. You can also see that the county is growing older at a pretty significant rate. The median age went from just over 34 in 2000 to 36 and 1/2 in 2011. So we've jumped about 2 and 1/2 years on average, to which my dad would say, "There's nothing wrong with that."[288.52][288.52](Laughter). Looking at the rest of the book, one of the biggest themes is the Great Recession. From 2007 to 2010, we experienced a huge decline in material living standards. This is not a surprise to anyone here, I'm sure, probably bigger than anyone in this room can remember. Everything in this book either directly charts that decline or it charts something that occurred against the backdrop of that decline, so it's a bit of a downer. But it is valuable information nonetheless. The other theme is that we're still a very divided county between east and west. We're much more unified than we used to be, but if you look at so much of this data, whether it's unemployment, or crime rates, or schools, or open space, there are huge differences between West Ventura County and East Ventura County. Okay, agriculture. And you can see, if you move along with the presentation, the page numbers are at the top, if it helps you move through the book. Crop value. You can see from this slide that the total revenue from farming is actually climbing, so growers are getting more out of less land. It's a good thing. That's been happening for decades. As the land here has gotten more expensive, farmers have moved away from crops that take a lot of land, things like grains and dry beans, toward crops that get a lot of value out of less land, like strawberries and now blueberries and raspberries. Anybody that's seen the hoop houses set up everywhere around can see the shift going to berries. They do take a lot of water, so that's another issue coming up as well. And they also take a lot of labor. Berries need to be picked by hand. So what's happened is growers are substituting labor for land. That brings a whole set of problems. Jobs are good, no one's complaining about more jobs, but these farm jobs tend to be very low wage, and we're importing a lot of laborers to do that work. And that means that we had, they have to find somewhere to live in a county that has a fairly high cost of living. In the past couple of years with the recession, we've seen a very small reversal of this trend. There are fewer laborers coming to California to look for work, and that has allowed the ones who are here to command slightly higher wages. Confused yet? No? You with me? Good. Okay. Moving along. Civic engagement. Here's where it starts to get fun. This shows the party affiliation of registered voters in Ventura County going back to the year 2000. The trend here is pretty clear. This used to be a slightly Republican-leaning county, and now it's slightly Democratic-leaning. The portion of Democrats has stayed about the same, at 39%, and the decline to states and third-party members have grown a lot, from 19% to 25%. So basically, the Republicans have lost ground in Ventura County, not so much to the Democrats, but to those disgusted with both parties altogether. As you can see in the one, does this have a pointer?
Yes.
It does.
It's a little off the line.
Laser. Ah, this one here. Okay, moving along. This is a chart of the gross county product, which is the measure of total value of goods and services produced, and as you can see, it's bad. Specifically, this part. The green line is the percentage change year to year, which shows that from 2007 to 2008, we had a decline of 7.2% in our economic output. That's pretty terrible. We have not had much of a recovery since then. The economy stopped getting worse in 2010, but didn't really start getting any better. The red line controls for inflation and shows that our gross county product in 2012 was still a little below what it was in 2005, so that's basically seven years of very little economic growth. I warned you this was going to be a downer. Okay, employment growth. This is the job growth that we've had during the recovery, or lack thereof. We've had a little job growth in 2010, but then we lost jobs again in 2011, and the projections are for more job losses in 2012 and 2013. So, oop. A little side in there. Okay. So you can see, we're over here, not looking too good. I do want to say a word about projections, however. A lot of the graphs in this report include predictions of the future. So basically, anything beyond this line here is a projection. We are not in the prediction business. We are not the Rand Institute. These projections do come from our sources, who are all experts in their fields, however you should take some of these projections with a grain of salt. We've tried to be very clear when we separate statistics of the past with projections of the future, so just, please don't base all your city plans on what we have in the book, because it may not be concrete enough for that. Moving along. Education. Specifically, EAP math scores. Ventura County has developed a nice little cluster of biotech companies, and one of their big complaints is that they can't find workers who have the right math and science training. This slide shows the performance of students in Ventura County on the Early Assessment Program Math Exam, which is something administered by the Cal State system to high school students to see if they're prepared for college-level work. The first thing that jumps out is that there's a big gap between the high-scoring and low-scoring districts. So you can see here, Oak Park is obviously way up high, Santa Paula way down low, Ojai right here. There are also some pretty clear racial disparities. For simplicity's sake, we've only shown the scores for Hispanics and non-Hispanic whites, which are the biggest groups at all of these districts. The blue bar is all students in the district. So if you look at the first set of bars, the overall county average, non-Hispanic white students pass the math exam at about three times the rate of Hispanic students. And finally, you can see that all the pass rates are pretty low. Only a few districts are above 20%, and only one is above 30%. So this isn't something that's unique to Latino kids or kids from certain neighborhoods. We're just not doing a great job in general preparing kids for college. Let's move through. Earnings by gender in education, this is a big one with my wife. The chart has a lot of data to it, but basically, it shows two things. First, going to college is still a tremendous idea, despite what you might hear from an economic standpoint. As you can see, people who don't graduate, or just get a two-year degree, earn much more than people who don't go to college at all. So, we want you to be over here, and on average, you're over here. If you get a bachelor's or an advanced degree, on average, you're going to make hundreds of thousands of dollars more over your lifetime. And that's something to keep in mind when talking about the crushing weight of student loans. Most people are going to come out ahead if they borrow money and attend and graduate college. And the second thing this graph shows is the disparity in earnings between men and women. Overall, in Ventura County, women earn 79 cents for every dollar that men earned. My wife is not happy about that at all. She says she earns the other 21 cents, time and again. And it doesn't get better if I offer the 21 cents. Overall, in Ventura County, yeah, women earn 79 cents, and that's actually sadly a little better than the nationwide average. Environmental quality, moving right along. We'll keep this one pretty brief, since there's not a lot of beaches outside the door. This slide actually does show some really positive news. It shows the number of times that one of the beaches in Ventura County had to close because the bacteria levels in the water were too high. And this is really pretty stunning, when you look at the graph. We went from 656 beach closures in 2005 to fewer than 100 every year since 2009. So even five or six years ago, at the left end of the graph, we already had the cleanest beaches in Southern California, so we're doing well there. Land use and housing. The median home price, always a hot topic. Between 2005 and 2008, the median home price went down about 40%. Sorry to all the homeowners in the room. It seems like it has leveled off. We've been bumping along at the bottom for about three years now, and we've had a little bit of gain in the past year or so. I would caution you against seeing this as completely negative. For every seller of a home, there's a buyer, and lower prices are bad news for sellers, but good news for buyers. Thanks to the crash in prices, there are thousands and thousands of families that can now afford to buy a home in Ventura County. Elsewhere in this chapter, you'll see a chart of the county's affordability index, and you'll see that it has improved greatly since the bubble burst, so it's really a balancing act. New housing starts. New housing starts is where you can really see the recession, obviously. It's parked right about here. Since the construction industry was obviously hardest hit, this is the number of permits pulled to pull, or, excuse me, pulled to build new homes in Ventura County every year. That doesn't mean that 100% of these homes were built, but most of them were. There were more than 4,000 in 2005, the height of the housing boom, and now you've got a few hundred every year, just about 10% of the peak. So, obviously, it has bottomed. Public safety. This is the overall rate of serious crimes for Ventura County, what the FBI considers Part I crimes, murder, rape, aggravated assault, and grand theft. As you can see, there's been a huge drop in crimes since the early 1990s, and this is true in Ventura County, and it's true pretty much everywhere in the country. So, the common thought that the poverty level and the crime level coincide is not necessarily true. The crime level continues to drop. Let's move along to transportation. We're almost to the end. Transportation is a major quality of life issue for a lot of people in this county. That's no secret. We have a pretty typical suburban development pattern, only with more open space, and while that's nice to look at, it means people don't tend to live close to their jobs. And this graph shows the time that people spend commuting. These are all five-minute increments in this graph. The two biggest ones are 10 to 14 minutes and 15 to 19 minutes, a dream for anyone who has lived in Los Angeles County. This is where we are, our two biggest ones. So if that was your average commute, if you lived in LA, you're loving life, but it's not so great here. And if you look at the right end of this graph, perhaps more interesting is the fact that the last two bars combined mean that there are 30,000 people in this county who commute an hour or more to work each day.
That's round trip.
So, this is another statistic that's heavily influenced by the economy. You might not remember it, but traffic was actually worse five years ago, because the unemployment rate was much lower. Now there are a lot of people who don't have jobs to commute to. But on the other hand, the worse the job market is, the longer people are willing to commute. So you do see an increase in these extreme 90-minute-plus commutes. Again, it's a balancing act. Elsewhere in the transportation domain, there's a pie chart that shows how many people drive to work alone every day versus carpooling, or working at home, or using mass transit. The figure for driving alone in this county is 78%, and only about 1% of Ventura County residents who are employed use public transit to get their jobs, or to get to their jobs. So for those of you who want to tackle the transportation problem by improving mass transit, you really have to improve it a lot, because you need to convince more than 1% of the population to use it in the first place. That's a pretty sobering thought, that you're going to start with only 1% at the beginning. So, others commonly say, just to keep adding freeway lanes, but there's evidence that that doesn't help much in the long term either, because people just drive more until the new lanes are full, too. So, transportation-wise, you probably need to improve both the roads and the transit, and you also need to encourage people to build housing closer to where the jobs are and vice versa. And that is the really, really fast version of our State of the Region Report. These are VCCA Executive Committee members, and Ron and I are happy to take any questions. Again, thank you for your time, and we have plenty of copies of the report, if you'd like one, and you can also download them, as I said, online. So, any questions? Yes, no? Comments? All right.
Mayor Pro Tem, Strobel. I just had a question. The unincorporated areas, is that included also with cities, or is...
I'm not su-- Ron, do you know?
Uh, in regard to crime rates, or what?
Or just in general, with when we were talking about even commuting to work, or...
I think in the communities they are, because that's all Ventura County residents, but the, like, crime rates are in the cities, that's city dependent, so the unincorporated wouldn't be involved.
Excuse me, would you come up to the mic, so the audience at home can hear you?
Have to mention councilmembers.
I was just saying that, you know, some of these are city-dependent, like the crime rates, and there's others, the educational, where the people who pass the, students who pass the EAP test are all individual school districts, Fillmore, Santa Paula, Ojai, et cetera. But some of these, I think the commute times would be applicable to the entire population of the county, everybody.
Thank you, and I thought it was a great report.
Good, good. Yeah, we traditionally have done it every five years. We're trying to move it up to every two years. It's going to come down to if we can secure funding to do that, because obviously, it's a tremendous amount of work, which goes along with tremendous amount of cost, so. But hopefully, two years will provide more data. And, again, it's really, it's not meant to be like a Rand Institute report, it's really more of a conversation starter, and hopefully, it gets people discussing, you know, a lot of the issues of the county, certainly as we come into a time when open space, excuse me, legislation is starting to expire, and there's going to be lots of arguments about that. So, if we can get people talking even just a little bit ahead of that expiration about any of these issues, I think we've done our job. So, enjoy the report.
Any additional questions, comments, from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time for public communications. I have three speaker cards. Rose Boggs. Rose, it says public comment, but should this be under, I guess this is a good place.
It should be under presentation by the city council to a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I am Rose Chavas Boggs, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, which I've been, I was one of the original members, a charter member, whatever you call it. There's two names that I'm going to tell you about. One is about Darcy Gamble, and she's been on our commission for two years, but she had to resign. And you may not know, but she is, in my mind, a famous magazine cover girl.
Yes, she is.
And there she is, with her family, her husband, Greg, and her daughter, Scarlett, who was outstanding in the performance of The Wizard of Oz at the Arts Center this weekend, and her son, Kate. And they are, her husband is big with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, I'm sure everyone's heard about that, and Darcy's been involved in that, too. She, and the conservancy has accomplished a lot for Ojai, and I hope everyone continues to support it. Darcy joined our commission about two years ago. I was really happy when she came on board, because I love young, beautiful, new energy in our commission. And she did a lot in a short time that she was here. However, our Historic Preservation Commission meeting meets at 5:00, and if you've been a mother, you know that by 5:00, your young children want mommy. And Darcy balanced all her different activities, and she was able to contribute quite a bit to our commission, but I hope someday that there'll be a time when her children are older and she'll come back to the commission. So I don't see her in the audience, but she's a cover girl, so you can see her there. Then I was asked to speak a few words about David Mason. David is the hierarchy of historians in Ojai. He gets things like phone calls from London, asking questions about things, and all over the world. He's quite well-known. And when I was asked to say a few words, if you talked to my children, they would have said, "Mom doesn't say a few words. She doesn't know how to do that." Anyway, David is being presented with a lifetime achievement award for historic preservation, and there's a lot of lifetime things to talk about, David, and so I just brought a few notes here that I will discuss in three minutes. Just a couple of personal things. David was a florist at one time, he's worn many hats, and he used to design the headdress for the La Florista's Charity Ball every year. This was a group of people in Beverly Hills and at the Beverly Hills Hotel. They had these fashion shows to make money for charity. These floral displays were worn on their heads, and they reached up as much as five feet. They were very heavy, they had to build special things for them. They had a brace, a metal brace down their back, because the display weighed anywhere from 30 to 50 pounds or more. So it was quite a feat, and David won awards for that. Then one other short story is, he went to San Antonio School, and there were five students when he was in first grade, and I forget the name, but one of them did go on to win an Academy Award, so he always likes to tell you that one-fifth of his class won Academy And this is his biography. "In 1993, David was selected as the year's winner of the Ojai Historic Preservation Award for the sharing of his own native son experiences, as well of telling the story of his town." Notice, I said 1993. David doesn't like to be recognized and thanked and all that. He's got a little shyness there. "For 18 years since that award was given, David has continued to relive those days in lectures and in his writings in the Ojai Valley News, and in articles in local publications and from afar. Writers and researchers seek out David's assistance in their studies of the history of our valley. David has been a longtime member of the Board of Directors of the Ojai Valley Museum, as well as being its liaison to the Ojai Valley Historic Preservation Commission. In 1985, David was the charter chair to the Historic Preservation Commission, then known as the Ojai Cultural Heritage Board. Because of his continued contributions to the citizens of Ojai, and for his mentorship of researchers who explore the pages of Ojai's history, David has been nominated to receive the upgraded lifetime status to the Historic Preservation Award." This was written two years ago. So he's met the criteria, so as a council, you are now presenting him with a lifetime achievement award, even though he's not present. So, thank you.
Yes, hello, Pete LaFollette, Ojai Avenue. Earth Day is this time of year, so I have another plug for the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, and I know that the city already partners with them, so this isn't news to you, that they're doing good things in the valley, like preserving the foothill trail area. But for the people at home, the Ojai Land Conservancy fights sprawl, preserves open spaces, and it is in keeping in the spirit of the Ojai Valley. You remember the saying, "I don't want to gain the whole world and lose my soul." Well, for preservation, we don't want to gain the whole world and lose Ojai Valley, so everyone, please keep in mind the very important work that the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy does, and support them and partner with them in every way possible, so we can preserve the traditions of the valley.
Alan Quick?
Good evening, members of council, a pleasure. I'd like to address two issues, or two groups, I guess. It's the Redevelopment Agency, follow-up group, whoever that is, and the council. I think it's one and the same. The Redevelopment Agency, as I understand, no longer exists, and now it's replaced by another organization, a follow-up agency or whatever. But I'm curious, when the Redevelopment Agency was functioning, you had design guidelines for the downtown redevelopment area. Could you be so kind as to ask staff, perhaps they could find those and give me a copy of them? I think they're essential to resolving the next issue, which I'm going to speak to the council as. I've worked in the sign trade here in town for quite a while. It's always been such a pleasure to work with the sign ordinance. It's so precise and concise. Making a sign, you need four things. You need a customer who wants to buy something, says the information on it, and you look at the sign ordinance, tells you how big it can be, generally what colors it is, and where it goes. it goes. And planning staff confirms that, and you're off to the races. It's not a complicated process. I can do it, and I'm not very complicated, so. But recently, it seems like it has become somewhat complicated, perhaps even to the point where they may consider making some changes to the ordinance. The ordinance is perfect. It is functionally perfect. It makes everything, it states what Ojai wants, and the way you do it in Ojai, and that's that. You have some guidelines that are open to a little interpretation, but not much. You don't have much wiggle room there. And then, there are comprehensive sign programs that are very definite about any given location that they happen to address. I'd like to be able, if the council would consider it, and staff would consider it, I could just sit down, cross the table, go over some issues that I think are beneficial to everybody. Please consider that, and I would certainly appreciate it if you get in touch with me on that. I believe staff would know how to do that. Thank you so much.
That's all the speaker cards I have for unscheduled items or public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Strobel?
Yes. Okay, the next item is a public hearing, request to construct one water well. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you recall, we had some discussion of the process of approving water wells at our prior council meetings, and it is somewhat ministerial in impact. Basically, you have the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency that is charged with looking after the well-being of the groundwater. And then, we have a contract with the county for permitting and inspecting wells, which takes care of the details of appropriately installing a well. So, tonight, you do have a public hearing on a well application submitted by Mr. Chet Hilgers. And if you have any detailed questions, Mr. Grant's available to respond to those.
Any questions from council to staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Do I hear any motions regarding this water well?
Well, so, the recommendation is to receive and approve the application for the water well. And do we need, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion. I feel like we've been presented with water wells, and we know that, I mean, it's all ministerial. So, it's, we've allowed them before. So, in my case, as long as we give them our blessing, and they have county inspect them, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion right now.
And include number two in that, which is to accept the determination of SEQA?
So, I moved to accept the determination that an environmental study is not required, consistent with the exception noted in the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, Section 15, 303, and receiving an approval application for a water well submitted by Chet Hilgers at 317 Bryan Street.
Second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I say no, does it not, does it pass?
It passes, it will pass, because it's a majority of a quorum, yes.
Okay.
I will say no, because I have never said yes to a water well, because we're under Golden State Water. And I feel somehow that they will take it out on the general public. But I certainly believe in the Hilgers' right to have the water well. So, as long as I can say no without stopping them, I will do so.
Okay, so we have two council members in favor, one opposed. The motion passes. We'll move on to discussion items. City crime statistics.
You're up.
crime stats for 2012 for the city of Ojai. It's compiled from Sheriff's Crime Analysis records, as well as Ojai Police Department records, to give you a wider perspective of activity in the city. We're going to compare some of the 2012 statistics to previous years, and where pertinent, we're going to look at crimes in the Ojai Valley, not just the Ojai City. So, this report's going to give you a breakdown of the Part I and II crimes, the arrests for 2012, the Ojai Municipal Code violations, your police response times within the city, as well as crime reduction strategies. So, to start with, this pie chart here shows you the Part I and II crimes for the city of Ojai for 2012. Just to give you a quick definition, I think you heard it earlier from the first gentleman who spoke, Part I crimes are considered to be some of the most serious. These are the crimes that are reported to the Department of Justice by law enforcement agencies throughout our country, and they're used by the FBI in their annual crime in the United States Statistical Report. They're broken down into two categories. You basically have crimes against persons, and those are homicides, rapes, robberies, and aggravated assaults. In 2012, these decreased by 12 cases in the city, and that gives us a 48 reduction from the previous year. So, that's a good thing. There are also Part I crimes against property, and those are burglary, grand and petty theft, auto theft, and arson. And once again, in 2012, these decreased by eight cases, which is a 5% reduction. So, altogether, there was 20 fewer Part I crimes reported in 2012 than in 2011, and that gives us a 10% overall reduction in crime in Part I and crime within the city. This next chart is going to give you a 20-year look at the Part I crimes. And I don't know, it may be too small for you to see. But this is Attachment B in your handout, so maybe you could see it there. But it gives you a historical perspective of Part I crime over the last 20 years. And as you can see, the population of Ojai has gone up and down over the last 20 years. But for the most part, these crimes have decreased. In 1992, the total number of Part I crimes was 316, compared to 176 in 2012. During the same 20-year time period, the number of crimes per thousand persons has gone from a rate of 41.31 per thousand persons in 1992 to our current rate of 23.36 per thousand persons. Larceny continues to be a problem. So, we did, I broke down the larceny for you. And Attachment sheet-
What is larceny as opposed to theft?
It's the various kinds of thefts. As you can see, all of these are thefts, various thefts. Yeah.
So, it's a general term?
Yeah, and they're different kinds, you know, pickpocket, purse snatch, all of those different type of things. So, this gives you a perspective of what took place over 2012. It also shows you, going back to 2007, the number of thefts that were reported. And even though we have a decrease, if you look at the bottom there, and we had a 2% decrease in thefts, that was really just three less thefts compared to 2011. We did have an increase in shoplifting, and we also had an increase in thefts from vehicles. But even a 71% increase in shoplifting and 10% theft from vehicles. So, that continues to be a problem. The shoplifting, most of that occurred over at the Y in that area, the markets, some of it in the arcade. But I did a breakdown. The majority was over there. The thefts from motor vehicles, that's people leaving stuff in their car and leaving their cars unlocked. We continually harp on that. Lock your vehicle, or take your stuff out, or hide it, or put it in your trunk. But that continues to be crimes of opportunity. So, that's your larcenies. So, if there's no questions on that, we'll go to the Part II crimes for 2012. I have to apologize for a typo. If you look where it says "simple assault felony," it says it again. The second column down should say "simple assault misdemeanor." So, I apologize for that. But across the board, you'll see that there's a reduction of 29%. So, if you have any questions on any of these crimes? The arrests? I have arrests here by month, and I have broken down by what types of arrests they were, as well as the arrests in the county. And if you'll see, in 2011, there was 427 arrests. In 2012, there was 287. Quite a reduction. So, I guess it would follow with the crime rate down, the arrests are down. But in the county, that's not the same, it's not the case. We actually ticked up a little bit. In 2011, we made 768 arrests in the Ojai Valley, and in 2012, it went up to 775. So, that gives you a breakdown. If you have any questions on that, how many felonies, infractions, misdemeanors, civil, and then by month. Municipal Code violations. In 2012, Ojai PD issued 33 citations and made 42 arrests for violations of the Ojai Municipal Code. This is down from 2011, when 71 citations were issued and 67 arrests were made. Attachment F in your package will give you the breakdown. But some of the most common citations were skateboard park protective gear violations, skateboards, roller skates being prohibited, unlawful to sleep or camp after dark in the park. The most common arrests were unlawful camping in the park after hours, as well as consumption of alcohol, alcoholic beverages in the parks. Those were the highest. Calls for service is next. This gives you the calls for service for 2011 and 2012. So, if you look at the total, it went up 305 more calls. And you can see where those went up. Suspicious subject calls, 143. It went up 143 more calls than 2011. Disturbances, 98 more calls, and alarms, 46. The suspicious subject calls, I'm good with that, because that tells me the public is calling in and doing, and being good neighbors and calling us whenever they see something suspicious. So, I'm good with that. So, altogether, it's like I say, 3,365 calls. And those are the various, these are when people call the police department for service. Police response times. Attachment A is just going to show you your response times for the city for the years 2010 through 2012. And the times shown are from the time the call is received and sheriff's dispatch until the officer arrives at the call. In 2012, the time it took police to respond to emergency calls decreased from 6.41 minutes to 5.32 minutes. Response times to urgent calls also decreased from 6.88 minutes to 6.3 minutes. And just for your information, that decrease means the officer's obviously arriving on scene sooner. On average, officers' travel time in the city decreased across the board to 3.73 minutes for emergency calls, 4.30 minutes for immediate calls, and 6.12 minutes for routine calls. And once at the call, our officers spent an average of 30 minutes resolving the issue. And so, this gives you all of the various times. And then, if you look at the account of events received and dispatched, it actually shows 13,880 events dispatched, compared to, we just talked about calls for service of 3,300 something. This is everything that, these are also officers' observations, things of that nature. The calls for service was just the public calling, calling us for service. But all of these events that you see here is everything that is tracked by our CAD system, which could be an officer writing a report. It could be him stopping a suspicious subject, all his self-initiated activity as well. Traffic citations are right here. In 2012, officers issued 394 traffic citations for 455 traffic violations. And the most common violation that we cited for was rolling and running stop signs. There was 89 citations for that. This is a decrease from the previous year, when our officers issued 512 citations for 620 violations. This gives you all of the violations in the amount, in different orders. If you have any questions as to what those are, I can tell you as well. Okay, traffic collisions have gone up. There were 96 traffic collisions reported in 2012, compared to 92 in 2011. This is a 4% increase. Of the 96 traffic collisions, 63 of those were classified as non-injury, and the other 33 were classified as resulting in injury. Only four drivers involved in the 96 traffic collisions in 2012 were found to be under the influence of alcohol. That was a 67% decrease in DUI-related traffic collisions. And there were no fatality traffic collisions in 2012. There was one in 2011. I can tell you that for the first quarter of this year now, traffic collisions are up 50% in the first three months. Injury accidents are up 75%. We've had 21 accidents in the last three months. This is not counting April, because we've had at least another six this month. Of those 21 accidents, six of them involved bicycles. And of those bicycles, five of them, five of the bicycles were at fault. This is also distracted driver month, and so, that has to do with texting and using your cellphone and those type of things. If you look at traffic collisions in the city, you look for the primary collision factor, whether it be failure to yield or something of that nature. A good majority of our primary collision factors are speeding. And when you see that, it's like if someone rear-ends you, it's basically speed unsafe for conditions. It's my feeling that many of those people who are rear-ending people are probably using their cellphone or texting. Okay? But we, unless we catch them or see them doing that, we have to use speeding as the primary collision factor. The deputies were averaging 30 to 40 tickets a month. Based on this, I told them to crank up their citations. I wanted them to cite for primary collision factors. They've already written 123 tickets this month alone. Okay? And so, 23 of those are for cellphone violations. They also have one for texting. And they have, and of the, of those 123 citations, 79 of them are all moving violations. So, we're hoping this will bring the traffic collision rate down. We'll see what the report says. But it's definitely concerning to me. So, we'll continue with that.
Excuse me, I had a quick question from Mayor Pro Tem. Do you, do you see that there's a certain pockets of the valley where that happens the most?
Where people have collisions?
Yeah, where people have-
We have, we have a chart, we have a map, basically, in our briefing room, and it's a pin chart. And every time there's a traffic collision, we put a pin on that location. And so, when we start getting clusters of pins, then we focus on those areas. So, okay. Some of the other things that I wanted to tell you about is our parole and probation searches. In 2012, the deputies conducted 520 parole and/or probation searches. And these are, and these operations resulted in the arrest of- And these are, and these operations resulted in the arrest of 194 individuals for a variety of criminal charges. These statistics only represent the searches that we targeted on specific individuals who were on probation and parole, and we did these operations during officers' downtime, when calls weren't pending. And these do not take into account the additional parole and probation searches your deputies do on a daily basis during vehicle stops and on calls for service. These are separate operations to where at briefing, we go through a parole or probation list, and we find someone who's on parole or probation within the city, and then we go out and invoke their search terms. So that's one, one of the things that we've been doing to keep crime down. Another thing, working with the Assistant City Attorney, Scott Howard. As you know, we began seeking stay-away orders as a condition of sentencing and probation for repeat offenders of the Ojai Municipal Code, mainly looking at the people in the park, some of the people who do a lot of drinking in the park, that type of thing. To date, Assistant City Attorney Scott Howard has been successful in getting 11 stay-away orders placed on some of Ojai's highest repeat offenders. And currently, the most common areas for these stay-away orders are in the city parks and the arcade. So we're going to continue doing that. The 290 compliance checks, in 2012, we did a 290 PC registrant compliance check in Ojai and the Ojai Valley, and all 58 compliance checks were conducted. Of the 58 subjects contacted, 45 were immediately found to be in compliance. The remaining 13 subjects were not at home, but follow-up investigation revealed that none were out of compliance. We also did a sting operation for selling alcohol to underage persons in 2012. Investigators from Ojai Police Station and the California Alcohol and Beverage Control Agency conducted one underage sting operation. During that operation, officers contacted 10 point-of-sale locations in the city of Ojai, and two of those locations sold alcoholic beverages to the minor. In addition, we, we went to 11 point-of-sale locations, were contacted in the Ojai Valley, and once again, two locations sold alcoholic beverages to the minor. All the locations that sold to a minor were cited, as well as the store, as well as the clerk. We conducted one DUI checkpoint in 2012. It was conducted in December. Later in the evening, that same DUI checkpoint was moved out of the city into the Ojai Valley. Combined, 368 vehicles were checked. There were no drivers arrested for driving under the influence. However, eight drivers were cited for various vehicle code violations, the most common being driving without a license or driving on a suspended license. We also have our social host ordinance. It was enforced once during 2012, and it was also enforced once in 2011. Since its inception in 2006, the social host ordinance has been enforced 16 times in the city of Ojai. The county's social host ordinance was enforced twice in 2012, and it's been enforced 41 times since its inception. So that's my report. If you have any questions, concerns, anything I can answer?
Just to comment, it's a real concern, the number of traffic collisions involving bicycles. And I did print off your flyer, what you need to know before you buy or ride a bicycle. And I think it might be really useful for the public to refresh their memories on the rules of the road, especially since we're encouraging share, sharos, the combination of bicycles and automobiles. We need to all be following the... Any comments or questions, counsel?
No, I just have a comment. I mean, thank you, Deputy. I just appreciate all this information. I mean, you've done such a great job. And I've seen the presence ever since you started. You place patrol cars, patrol cars in certain locations, and I've seen the difference. And it seems like you're well aware that there's more accidents, more than anybody, and that you're actually being proactive and trying to deter this from happening. But overall, I'm happy that there's a decrease in crime. And even getting calls for suspicion, I mean, that makes me happy that the community is getting involved in any questions or concerns they have. They feel comfortable calling the dispatch. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to comment that I think our Sheriff's Department does a fabulous job. And Chief, how many years have you been with us now?
Just one year.
Oh, it's only one year. Because for the public at home, generally, they switch positions here as the chief about every four years, and we have no say in it. So I'm glad you have three more years.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, this is a receiving file, so we don't need a motion on this. The next item is the proposed trolley service to Lake Casitas Recreation Area. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Grant will be.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm pleased tonight to present the Lake Casitas Recreation Area's proposal, which specifically was brought forth by Park Services Manager Carol Belzer. And she's here tonight, and she'd like to speak in a minute here. And she brought up the idea, the hopes of establishing a fixed trolley route within Lake Casitas facilities with periodic services to downtown Ojai through Miners Oaks and the Y. Initial service is anticipated to be every Saturday from 10:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., starting soon after Memorial Day and finishing by Labor Day. There's a route guarantee involved here, which, with rebates for the fares paid, which would reimburse the city for the cost of operating the route. So there'd be no loss to the general fund or otherwise for operating this route. The city would work with Casitas Municipal Water District and Carol, as the Park Services Manager, to, and the days of the service, and changing the route and trying to improve ridership to assure this was a well-serviced route and successful. Beyond providing transportation for the campers and the water park users and the day users at Lake Casitas area, this service would provide rides to and from the lake within the water park and camping area for Ojai youth and Ojai families, and provide the opportunity for late campers to shop, dine, and tour to the city of Ojai. So it's proposed to circulate within the Lake Casitas area back and, back and forth for roughly an hour and a half, and then it makes a route to downtown Ojai. And it'll have several stops on the way each way. I think the fiscal impact, as I mentioned, because of the fare rebates, the route guarantee has no impact to the city. But this will hopefully increase the tourism into downtown Ojai and also provide a good service and a partnership with a fellow agency, the Casitas Municipal Water District. Unless there's any questions, I think Carol Belzer would like to mention a few things.
Question, comments, counsel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Strobel, Councilmember Lara, Councilmember Smith. It's really exciting to be here. I'd like to thank city staff, Greg and Drew Lurie and Susie Mirers, who actually worked with me in crunching the numbers and doing the logistics to put this package together for the presentation this evening and for your consideration of this pilot program. And to keep things moving quick, I came up with the top 10 reasons why counsel should support this pilot program. Number 10. Having a trolley go to Lake Casitas has been talked about for years. Back when I was the Director of Recreation, we used to ask ourselves, "Why can't the trolley go out to Lake Casitas?" It could bring our day camp youth out there. It could bring teenagers out there that don't yet have cars or drive, or maybe shouldn't drive because they have public transportation. So it's been talked about for many years. And again, it's exciting to be able to bring this proposal tonight for you. Number nine, Casitas will pay the costs of this pilot program. Need I say more? Number eight, it's a good time to work with the Casitas Municipal Water District. Number seven, this is not a special or a private charter. This is an extension of your public service route, and it's been okayed by VTCT, VCTC, Ventura County Transportation Commission. Number six, the trolley will stop at the city skate park, the park and ride. It'll also stop at your new stop southbound at the Y, loop around Lake Casitas, and we're looking at it coming through Miners Oaks as well. Number five, last summer, the Casitas Municipal, I'm sorry, the Casitas Water Adventure employed 79 youth lifeguards. 51 of those lived in the Ojai Valley, and 10 of those lived within the city limits of Ojai. And so perhaps some of those youth might look for transportation to and from work. And number four, Lake Casitas Recreation Area attracts 5,000 to 6,000 customers during the summer. Number three, the Chamber of Commerce and the Ojai Visitors Bureau support Lake Casitas trolley because they anticipate that some of those 5,000 to 6,000 customers might be interested in coming into town and eating a meal, and maybe coming back for a longer stay. Number two, we want the green and red Ojai trolley seen throughout the Lake Casitas Recreation Area to move customers, campers, to the park store, to the marina, to the cafe, the boat rentals, and the Casitas Water Adventure. And I was having trouble deciding which was the number one reason, but for now, I think the number one reason why counsel might want to support this endeavor is because trolley riders and city residents could get on the trolley, pay a dollar, go to Lake Casitas, not pay the vehicle entry fee, not worry about camping, spend their day camping, fishing, hiking, disc golf, Casitas Water Adventure, and then come back home. So that concludes my little presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What age do you have to be to go into the water park without a parent?
You have to be 12.
12, okay.
Without a, an adult.
Any other questions? No?
One comment, Madam Protem. 16. You have to be aged 16. To go, to show up at the gate and go in all by yourself. And we do allow, like, younger children can go with their older brother or sister, who are aged 16 or 18 and over.
So they need to have someone with them who is above 16?
They need to have, young children need to have somebody that's an adult, which is 18 and over. And I'm being a little confused because we're just confirming our rules now.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at the possibility for teens or 12 and up to take the trolley, to go to, to go to Lake Casitas, to enjoy the water park, without necessarily having a parent with them. And what age that would be?
They would need somebody 18 and over to accompany them.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just comment that I think this is an excellent pilot program. Maybe it'll generate even more use of the trolleys, which would help us in our traffic decongestion. And, and I'm really excited that the route guarantee would offset the cost of the proposed trolley route. So there's no impact to the general or other funds of the city. So that's excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've worked on this a long time.
Thanks, city staff.
For those of you at home, Carol was a member of the city family for a long time.
I have one speaker card. Did, do you have a question?
I was ready to do a motion if it was.
Okay. I have one speaker card. Scott Iker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members and staff. I'm Scott Iker, the CEO of the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to, tonight to support two chamber members, the Ojai Trolley and the Casitas Municipal Water District, and I'm supporting the pilot program to take the trolley out to the lake. As Carol said, for a number of years, both the trolley and the lake have been trying to find a way to get the trolley out to the lake, and it appears that Carol has found the means to fund this for you. And even though this trial period lasts just about 90 days, I think it will certainly give us an opportunity to confirm its value. In theory, we should see more late campers coming into town, for the reasons that Carol stated just before me. And that will generate not only more tourism, but also more PR word of mouth for the valley and for the lake, and that will only help our tourism industry. It should also allow some of the seasonal employees of the lake, as Carol said, to use the trolley as transportation to and from their work. And hopefully, it will increase the number of local people who utilize the water park, because they don't have to pay the day-use fee to get in. For this and many other reasons, and because it was really nice to hear Carol stumble over VCTC, when she used to be able to say "C-B-D-G" so fast that no one could understand her. The Chamber of Commerce and the Ojai Visitors Bureau wholly support the implementation of this pilot program, and we hope that you will do so. Thank you very much.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Would anyone else from the audience like to speak on this item? Counsel?
I just have a quick comment too, if I may, Mayor Protem Strobel. Just real quick, I would just like to encourage if the schedule could come out sooner, because I could also see employees of the water park taking, using the trolley from and back into town. So I just would like to see if the city could help out any way possible with promoting this. But I'm all for it. I mean, I'm ready to make a motion if it needs. So I move to authorize the city manager to work with the Casita Municipal Water District to implement services to Lake Casitas Recreation Area with connections to downtown Ojai, as outlined in this report.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
At this time, we'll adjourn as the Ojai City Council and, how do I say? I've listened to this for years. We'll adjourn as the City Council and convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. The only item is the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. At this time, we'll adjourn as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency and reconvene as the Ojai City Council. Reports from council members?
No, I just want to say that I attended my first economic developing collaborative meeting, and I thought it went really well. I think Bruce is doing a fantastic job, and I just see a lot of energy in that group in terms of promoting small businesses. And I think Ojai is perfect for that. We're a small community that promotes small businesses. And also, I'd like to give thanks to the Rotary for putting on their annual Rotary Youth Fest. And I think it was a great success. We went. My daughters had a great time. Ceramics. My daughter had her first piece that's going to be fired and glazed, and she's really excited about that. So, and that's, that's my report.
Okay. City Manager Clark?
I just wanted to mention, in the warrant list that you just approved for the successor agency, there was a $17,000 payment to the, to the county auditor controller, which is the final payment that we have to make in terms of them taking money away from us. That's the bad news. The good news is the original bill was $267,000 instead of $17,000. And as you know, Susie and I took a trip up to Sacramento and convinced them that the $250,000 was not a correct charge, and they actually agreed with it, which seems to be a rare experience when you go up and meet and confer with the Department of Finance. So our, the challenges before us are that we have a loan agreement, and there's a difference of opinion between our interpretation of the state law and the Department of Finance determination of the state laws to how interest is calculated. And we have to find a way to work that out so that we can get our loan repaid. And then we do have to come up with a management plan for the one piece of property that we own on Montgomery Street for housing. And those are really the only activities that remain in the unwind of the successor agency.
We have to come up with a management plan regarding the Montgomery Street. What type of management plan?
Well, it'll be a very simple management plan, which will say we plan to use it for low and moderate income housing in accordance with our housing element. The reason for these management plans is that many agencies, or successor agencies, I should say, ended up with a large amount of property. And the state was concerned about the proper disposition of that property. And so for us, it's a fairly minor undertaking, but for many cities, it's going to be a major undertaking and another source of litigation, I'm sure.
undertaking and another source of litigation, I'm sure.
City Attorney?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay. Or City Clerk?
Dave? Yeah. Well, we're on Crime Stat. So last year, we had one armed robbery in all of 2012. This past Sunday, we had our first. Star Market was robbed. There'll be a press release that comes out on it. I can't say a lot about it here, but...
Armed robbery?
That's correct. An armed robbery occurred around closing time at the Star Market. So we will be doing a press release. We're investigating it. Detectives are looking into it, but I wanted to make you aware that that occurred. So be safe, and that's all I have.
I have a question. How are we doing in the area as far as the credit card?
The skimming?
The skimming, yeah.
Well, there's identity theft, and then there's skimming. We had a recent event in 2012, I think it was at the end, where someone installed skimmers at the Chevron. He's since taken some measures to ensure that doesn't happen again. Not seen it a lot, the identity theft and the skimming. It does occur yearly, and the detectives do deal with it, but not as frequent as it was in the past.
Finance Director Miras, any reports?
No, I don't have anything to report, thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Grant.
Hi, Ken. I thought I'd just mentioned briefly that we've had a few material donations recently, which are probably worthy of mention. One of them was three very large oak trees on Kayama near Bonita. So there's a person over there who donated these large, they're large enough that required a crane to install them, so they're pretty sizable. Three trees worth about $10,000. Additionally, there was Ventura Coordinated Wire Rope completed an additional donation for the shade structure at the Libby Bowl. There was some lateral bracing that was recommended in the back of the bowl that'd be hard to see, but they donated all the cabling and special fixtures in order to connect that, and our crew installed that. And then finally, Public Works worked with the Ojai Valley Tennis Club in preparation for the Ojai, starting immediately. And we refurbished the entire substructure of the bleachers up on the upper courts. So there's some old concrete courts up there that were in bad shape. There were some estimates, maybe 60-year-old, 80-year-old concrete that were spalling and breaking up, so that was all refurbished, as well as all the wood structure that goes around the rest of the upper courts. And those were all, the beams were replaced that were aging. You know, normally, every year, they do just the seating area and the walking decks as the crew works through those, but this is a pretty significant substructure rehab.
Does it start on Wednesday or Thursday as far as the tennis tournament?
I believe they start tournaments tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, my goodness.
I mean, matches tomorrow, right.
All right.
It wraps up on, and I think this year, who's the gal that was, was a classic picture of?
Tracy O'Neal.
Tracy, yeah, with Alan Rains. There's a classic shot on the website over at Rains. So she'll be back with her son, I believe, who's competing this year in the college division.
Okay. If I haven't forgotten anyone, meeting adjourned.